Good evening, everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the April 29th Special Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 6:31 PM. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, and so staff and members of the public can be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Let's see. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. So, members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. You can press *3 if you're on the phone, or if you've joined by computer or smartphone, you can look for the hand icon or send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So, I'm going to wait a moment and see if anybody wants to raise their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes, we have one person in the chambers here, and we don't have anyone from the public attending virtually at this time.
Okay, fantastic. So, you're going to be invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, you're going to come up to the lectern, press the button so that the microphone turns red, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, speak clearly, and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes with this timer. Let's see, if you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. So, Clerk, can you please call up to the lectern?
Yes, Chris Winters.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
There he is, right there. Okay, my name is Charles Winters, and my wife and I live up on Squawk Mountain at 770 Hywood Drive. We've been there for over 40 years, and I'm here today to ask for additional funding for the Issaquah Police Department in fiscal years '25 and '26. So, what got me started down this path, oh, by the way, the police didn't send me, I don't know anybody who works for the police. I'm just a concerned citizen and resident of Issaquah. But when we first moved here, as you're all quite aware, it's like paradise on earth compared to most places I've lived. And I immediately found out that we had a low crime rate, peaceful residents, and a real nice police department. I mean, they're just officer-friendly all the way. So, for almost 40 years, I really didn't think much about the place, took them for granted, as we all do. And then the pandemic happened. And the first thing I noticed is the city took a huge hit on revenue because all the economy shut down. All the revenues you were getting from sales has dried up overnight. And people weren't working, they weren't paying taxes, they weren't doing a lot of things. Then the riots came, and the crime rate went through the roof. People started traveling to Issaquah for the sole purpose of committing property crimes. And that goes on today, hasn't really, hasn't debated at all, in fact, it's probably increasing. So, I started taking a big interest in the police. And then, you know, just paying attention and reading up on them, finding out how they're doing. And then, in September of '22, I attended a, virtually attended a meeting of this committee wherein the new police chief, Shuan, gave a presentation about TEG plans or something, I don't remember what it was. And in the course of her presentation, she mentioned a key parameter that police departments all over the country use to measure their capabilities, and that is the ratio of residents to full-time employees in the department. And she, twice, she mentioned that Issaquah, when compared to peer cities, was at the bottom of the list. Not, not good, that really bothered me. So, after some procrastination, I made some inquiries with Issaquah Police, Kirkland, Redmond, and Mercer Island to find out, well, how are they doing on this key parameter? Ratio of residents to full-time police employees. And so, I gathered the data, and lo and behold, Chief Shuan was right. We're at the bottom of the list. Top of the list is Redmond, where, with a ratio, this is as of October of last year, a ratio of 564 to 1 out of a population of 74,000. All four, all four of these cities are roughly equal, same ballpark of size, of population, crime problem from Seattle, affluent tax base, and so forth. Next in line was Mercer Island at 684 to 1, then Kirkland at 692 to 1, and finally Issaquah at 738 to 1. So, the difference between those two, peer cities, roughly equal in size and so forth, is, raises an alarm, and so I wanted to bring it to your attention. So, I wrote all of you a letter in December of last year, you may remember it, and I attached the data. And so, I'm here today to remind you about that, and it triggered some more discussion because I know your cycle, you come to a conclusion about next year's, next fiscal year's budget for all departments. And I just wanted to remind you that police protection is top of the list of the services, in my opinion. Most important, most primary, most immediate, most important in this day and age of rising crime and rising population. And right up there with water and sewer services. You know, parks, and community services, and all the other things that we do are important, but they're not as important as police protection. So, I'm encouraging you to give this some thought as you work your way up to the budget for the next two years. And I'll check back with President Walsh in a few months to see how you're doing on that and where you're headed. Just, just to remind you here, right now, Issaquah has an authorized head count for 24 of 61 heads. And the chief has been hard at work on hiring people, getting good quality people. So, they're up to 57, as of today, they're 57. So, they're, they're doing good on the hiring, but they need, but I believe they're underfunded. And I think if you take a close look, talk to the city administration, you'll find out that there's room for improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. We appreciate someone who comes with a good set of data and wanting to talk to the council. So, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who has signed up indicating to speak?
Yes, we had a virtual member of the public join us, Connie Marsh, who would like to make comments. Connie, I'm making you a panelist now.
Okay.
Connie, this is Tisha. It looks like you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you, unfortunately. Okay. I see you're unmuted. We still cannot hear you. Um, I'd like to do a quick test. If Chief Shuan or Christie is available to do a quick unmute and audio check with us in the room?
Chief Shuan.
Okay, we can hear you loud and clear.
Christie, Shuan.
Okay, we can hear you, Christie. Connie, it appears there's some kind of audio issue because I can see you're unmuted, but we're not getting any audio in the room.
We can try again under the public comment portion of tonight's agenda item.
Yeah, Connie, if you can hear us and you're trying to speak, can you go ahead and send the host a chat message and just kind of talk it through? If we hear you in the next few moments, we can get a public comment early on. Otherwise, we'll look either for your email, or if you want to stay through after our question and answer period, we can potentially get you then.
Okay, and it looks like she may, she may need to drop off the meeting, but unfortunately, I'm not, not sure what we can do at this point to make the audio work. Our apologies.
Yeah, okay. Well, technology sometimes works, most of the time works, but sometimes we run into issues like that. So, let's see, let me get through the rest of the agenda portion. I think at this point, we are just on to our agenda item, which is COM 0023, Facilities and Revenue Options, presented by Autumn Monahan, Administrative Services Director, and Andrea Snyder, Interim CFO and person who just does everything at the city. Take it away, thanks.
Thank you, Council President. Hi, good evening, I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator and Interim CFO. And with me, yes, is Autumn Monahan. We also have a number of folks online to help answer questions as they may arise today. Before we begin tonight, I wanted to take a moment and just say that tonight's presentation really represents the culmination of years of work and discussions on how to address the city's facilities needs. Many of these conversations, we began pre-pandemic when we were talking about the city administration and offices' needs and a new fire station. The administration has been working really hard to discover the best options to address those needs. And this is, this is hard, complicated stuff. The city hasn't done a big facilities project, big facilities investment in about a generation. And so, we have a lot of information that we have tried to distill down for you this evening to provide one cohesive proposal that you can react to. And so, that's really the goal and purpose of tonight, is to discuss what your feedback might be, what questions, what information you need. And we look forward to getting into some of that tonight, also having subsequent discussions and conversations with you, including, very importantly, how we would engage the public moving forward. And so, you know, we are excited for the presentation tonight and the conversation with you, and look forward to your questions this evening. And without any other delay, Autumn Monahan, Administration Services Director.
Thank you, hello, council. I'm excited to be here tonight to continue our discussions on facility and revenue options. So, purpose of tonight is to provide an update on the city's police, court, and city hall planning, review revenue options, receive your feedback, and then review some next steps. The direction we're seeking tonight is threefold. Should administration focus further research on a phased approach on Old Town Municipal Campus? Does the council agree with the administration's proposal to use current resources for leasing office and court space? And should the administration perceive a planning for a ballot measure for public safety facilities bond vote, and start creating a community engagement plan for further review? As was already mentioned, we've been studying these issues for many years. Our space planning actually started this round, started in 2018, pre-pandemic. We refreshed that study in 2023 last year, and I was before you many times, going through what our needs were as a city, and what rose to the top is public safety. So, before you on these options here, after all of that discussion in 2023, all of these were included in our CIP. Those include further assessing two options for city hall space, either purchasing and renovating an existing building in Issaquah or building a municipal campus here in Old Town, as well as relocating and building a new fire station, 71, demolishing this building, city hall south, and moving the court, and renovating city hall, the current building for all police use. In addition, during the council's retreat in February, there was interest in learning more about a levy lift, levy lid lift for public safety, as well as voter-approved bonds. As a reminder, here are the goals we set for our space planning project last year. You'll see, well, and I'll review these real quick. It's ensuring safety, stewarding public dollars, customer service, economic development, providing community amenities, and environmental stewardship. And you'll see here, we've used, I've used this graph many times to kind of assess both options A and B. You'll see here that stewarding public dollars and customer service are marked somewhat likely and not likely under option B. I'll cover this more in a minute, but generally, we're very limited in options on what to purchase and renovate here in Issaquah. So, that makes it more unlikely that we would be able to find any operational cost efficiencies or co-locate with other civic services or other community amenities. So, last summer, the city council asked us to go out and research options for purchasing and renovating a facility. There are less than 20 existing buildings in all of Issaquah that would meet our space requirements. That excludes warehouse, industrial, and retail. Of those properties, following an extensive search, there's just extremely limited viable options in town, and especially in central Issaquah, that meet our goals, and none that the administration would currently recommend for pursuing. So, we turn back to the idea of an Old Town Municipal Campus. So, this time, we're proposing a phased approach that would utilize our existing city-owned property here for a Fire Station 71, which means we demolish this current building, actually bringing the fire station back home. This used to be a fire station, once upon a time. Remodeling the current city hall for exclusive police use for their space needs, and then leasing space for city hall, council chambers, and courts so that we can really phase this project, and then having a long-term goal of someday also constructing a new city hall. So, now I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Administrator Snyder to talk a bit about the fire station proposal.
Thank you, Director Monahan. So, we've been working on this fire station relocation for several years now. We have identified the need for a new fire station. This is largely driven by the growing community and the size of the fire apparatus required to respond to emergencies. We need fire stations that have bays that are big enough for the equipment we need to respond to fires. And currently, Fire Station 71 does not have bays that are big enough for really the equipment that we need. So, as you may recall, we've been working with state parks on a location there for a fire station. That work continues, we've been working with them for several years now, and we're still at least two years away for our potentially getting land control of a site at the state park. And it's not, it's not a done deal, it's not assured, they still may not approve of this request. And so, as we're looking at our other facility needs, we've been constantly assessing what are other good fire station locations? How can we meet this need? And we look at the data for response times. So, best overall city response times, again, overall for the city, are from Front and Gilman Street and along Sunset. That's what our modeling has showed as we've partnered with EFER on this. And so, we've been continuously evaluating to try to find how we can have the most responsive service overall for the city as a whole, as well as the lowest cost. And that's what's been really driving us in looking for fire station sites. And so, here, we see a concept for this very property that we're sitting on, as Autumn said, was our original Fire Station 71 location. We wanted to see if it was possible to even fit a modern fire station that's big enough, that has bays that are big enough to fit the equipment we need, and we discovered it is. It is big enough for that. So, with the idea of moving the municipal court to another location, we could use this property to build a new Fire Station 71. And the picture that you're seeing is just a more urban model of fire station, so it would not be all on one level. In order to fit on this property, it would be multiple stories to be able to fit all of the needs. So, the residences and dormitories for the firefighters would be above the bays, for example. Back to Autumn.
So, with the proposal of building a fire station on this site, we needed to find a new home for municipal court, as well as move out our city hall offices on the second floor of city hall so that we could give police the well-needed space that they need. So, we've also been looking into leasing options, which can reduce upfront costs. Also, a phased approach helps with just organizational capacity to do all of these capital projects. And we've started some discussions with King County District Court, which operates a court on the other side of town, and amazingly, they have space. So, we're in discussions, and we've done some tours with them. They are looking into the idea of leasing us a designated courtroom that would be just for Issaquah's use, a judge's chambers, a holding cells, a public window, staff workspace. This facility was built as a court, and it fits our operational needs. And so, we're quite excited about this opportunity. We have expressed what our needs are as far as square footage with King County, and they're right now working on estimating those leasing costs for us, so we should have those numbers soon. We're also researching options for leasing space for both city hall and council chambers, and so that search does still continue. As far as police station renovations, I, I showed this slide at your retreat in February, but we've refined our estimates a bit further on what renovations are needed for that building. It includes seismic upgrades, as well as a midlife renovation that was identified in our facilities condition assessment, and then tenant improvements for police's operations and just overall growth. So, here are just some very rough order-of-magnitude cost estimates. You've seen this number before for Fire Station 71. It's about the same for this site, about $32 million. The police renovation's at about $15 million, so that's $47 million for this first phase of the project. As far as leasing costs, we just took kind of market rate and really estimated it'd probably be about $1 million a year for rent, and then tenant improvements upwards of $4 million. Again, these are very rough order of magnitude. If council is interested in pursuing this option further, we would need to do some more scoping and cost estimating and come back to you.
Autumn, before you head out, we've got a question from Councilmember Mart.
Yeah, a couple of questions. First off, it seems like the, the size of this building is smaller than the fire station. I was looking at it. The fire station's footprint is about 1,000 square meters, and this entire parcel, including the courtyard in front, is only about 750 square meters. So, it seems like a smaller patch if you were going to try to put a fire station in where the, where the current fire station is. That's the first question.
What we've done with our architect is look at how to fit the square footage we believe that we need for this fire station onto each site. And I think the issue that we would have with putting it on the locate, on its current location is really one around parking and impeding on Memorial Park. And so, as we look at the size of the bay that would be needed, also the apron, the driveway getting into the bay to be able to maneuver the trucks in and out off of Sunset, it would need to be a little bit bigger than certainly what it is today, and just didn't, didn't fit well. We would need to take over pretty much all of that parking lot and maybe even get into a little bit of Memorial Park, especially as we look at stormwater control. This site, because of the alley and what would be the egress on Sunset, offers just a little bit more maneuverability for the size of apparatus and the bays and the apron or driveway that we would need.
But it seems like a much smaller patch. I mean, it's literally the entire property is less than the footprint of the current Station 71 build. So, if, if Station 71 is too small, I don't understand how going to a smaller parcel would work.
And, and if council would like us to provide the other kind of concept fit drawing for the current location of Fire Station 71, we can certainly do that at a later date so you can see kind of how these things compare with each other.
I would definitely like to see that. The other question I have is, what's the, I don't understand the rental, what, what would we be renting, to whom, where?
So, the proposal is that we would lease space at King County District Court for municipal court. And then, we would be still searching for options to relocate city hall and council chambers elsewhere. So, that work is still ongoing in finding a location.
Can you bring, can you put that slide up, back up, please? You're there a second. The one, the one that showed $1 million for rent? Had numbers, there we go. So, leasing costs, city hall and court, so tenant improvements someplace else? So, we would do $4 million in tenant improvement someplace else, and then spend a million a year renting at that someplace else? I see. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, looks like we can move on.
Great, thank you. So, question remains, how, how can we pay for these facility needs? And the first part of our proposal would be that we use existing funds to help fund for the leased property expenses, and that would be, again, for city administration offices and municipal court. We anticipate having approximately $10 to $15 million from the sale of city hall northwest, as well as our government mitigation funds that we have on hand right now, including the proceeds from the Lakeside Development Agreement that I know we've discussed a couple of times over the past few years. So, with that money, if we look at the $4 million in estimate for the tenant improvements, these existing funds that we have are anticipated to cover the lease costs for five to eight years for the city administration offices and municipal court. As we look at the financing portion, bond versus levy, council had asked for a little bit more information from our discussion last time about these tools. And so, I'd like to go through that tonight and then provide the administration's recommendation on how we would finance our other capital needs for the construction of the fire station and the police department renovations. So, differences between a voter-approved bond and a single-year levy lid lift. The most important difference is this top row right here, which is that a single-year levy lid lift would, could be ongoing, but there's a cap on how much of that revenue can be used for debt service. And that cap is really nine years. So, you can't use proceeds from a levy lid lift towards debt service for more than nine years. That's a state law. That is really the main reason and main difference here between a levy lid lift and a voter-approved bond. The voter-approved bond would be, the term would be limited to the life of the bond. So, if we take out, let's say, a 30-year loan in order to pay for these capital expenses, then the bond would last, that extra property tax would last those 30 years, and we could use that revenue to pay for that debt service. If it's a 30-year loan we take out to pay for the Fire Station IPD renovations, only nine years of revenue with a levy lid lift could we use to pay off that debt service? So, we would need to figure out what other funds, what other revenues we would have to pay off that debt service if the city chose to proceed with a levy lid lift. I want to pause there and just ask if there's any questions because I think that's the really, the most important difference, and I'd love to go through the other differences as well.
Councilmember Ray?
Cinch paused. What's the, what, what term of debt are we using for our estimates?
Our estimates are 30 years with 5%.
So, the nine years, it gets completely blown out, got it?
Great. Other key differences in terms of what type of vote would pass? So, for a voter-approved bond, it requires 60% of the vote with at least 40% turnout from the last gubernatorial election. That's required to pass a bond. For a levy lid lift, the bar is a little lower with 50% plus 1 to pass and no turnout requirement. Bonds cannot be used to replace equipment, whereas levy lid lifts can be used for any general purpose, again, with that exception of debt service having a limit of nine years. The bond is not subject to state limits on the total property tax rate. So, cities are limited in terms of how much we can tax overall, and the bond can be in addition to that limit, whereas the levy lid lift is included in those state limits on the property tax rate. So, in addition to using, in addition to using existing funds to pay for those leasing costs, we're also recommending using a bond for paying off those capital expenses and debt service. Our estimates here show Fire Station 71 would have an annual debt service of a little over $2 million. The average annual household impact would be 140. To determine average annual household impact, that's a home value of a little over $1.1 million. For the Issaquah Police Department renovations, the annual debt service would be $975,000 with an impact of about $66 annually on that average Issaquah home. So, total, you can see $3 million in debt service a year, and then the total impact on Issaquah. on Issaquah property taxpayers would be about $206. Again, these are all estimates, rough order of magnitude, but we wanted to show approximately what those impacts would look like over 30 years of debt service. In addition, the levy rate would increase from .74 per 1,000 assessed value to 92 cents. I see there's some questions.
Yes, indeed. Councilmember Martz?
Okay, so I'm a little confused. On a million-dollar house, that levy rate would result in $740 to $920 per year. So how does the 206 relate to somewhere between 740 and 920?
I can check my math. We've used this model and...
Right, but I mean, 1,000, you know, .74, $1,000, multiply that by 1,000, you get $740. So I'm just trying to understand how, that tells me that a million-dollar house would have a fee of between $740 and $920, but I see 206 under household impact. So why the difference? Where's the rest of the...
Andrea, would it be the 920 minus the 740?
Oh, that's not a range.
It goes to .92.
I'm sorry. I read the other slide.
That's right. That's where it's increasing from.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
So the .74 is what we, what people pay today. .92 is what they would pay with this, and so it's the difference between the two.
So there's a levy currently that's, what is the .74 per thou assessed value?
That's the existing property tax levy. There's additional slides coming up that get a little bit further into that.
.74 is our current rate of property tax, and so it would increase from .74 to .92.
Thank you. I thought that was just a range, a variable range, that we weren't sure exactly how much it increased.
Okay.
Perils of math. Thank you.
Indeed. Other questions? Okay. So this next slide compares those existing rates. These are all the 2024 levy rates from our peer cities and neighboring cities. As you can see, Issaquah is the lowest among our peers listed here at .74 per $1,000 of assessed value. Oh, and I should say that if we were to increase the tax to pay for these capital needs, it would really put us between Redmond and Kirkland at that .92 amount. So again, just reiterating our funding recommendations and how we would fund these facility needs, that we would fund the office and court leases with existing funds that we have from the sale of City Hall Northwest, as well as our government mitigation funds. And then we would plan for a voter-approved bond to provide for public safety facilities. Next steps, we would return to council to discuss an update on leasing and partnerships. Also, public engagement plan on these projects and any potential ballot measure. We want to discuss what that would look like with you, what our plan is. And then, of course, we would bring back refined costs and scoping as we have that information available. Are there any questions?
Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Thanks. So let's start with the fire station. If we tear down this building and we put a fire station here, that's a, I would call that a 100-year decision. It's going to be here for a long time. And so the, you know, the one data point we've gotten is response times. Response times are good. We didn't see any actual figures to help us understand that, but that was the one data point that we were presented. Do we know that that response time is going to be good 25 years from now, 30 years from now, 50 years from now? And what is going to happen to this street out here with larger vehicles? And, I mean, and certainly, we can't predict everything, but I would think that a part of our thinking is, is this location going to serve us well for the next 100 years? Because it's going to be here, and I don't see any of that kind of data or projections or anything being presented to us. So what's the thinking there in terms of the long-range consequences of placing a fire station on a very, very busy street in central Issaquah?
Thank you for that question. I'm wondering if Chief Ben Lane could help provide some insights into what was used with the modeling to determine response times. We work with Eastside Fire and Rescue to understand what their response time data is and for them to model this out for us. And I see he's there on camera.
Yeah, good evening, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
All right. To answer the question on how Eastside Fire and Rescue uses data for our planning purposes. So in collaboration with the city around this discussion for the fire station, we looked at data over the last four and a half years, and we totaled just shy of 19,000 calls. And we pin mapped those calls throughout the service area, and then we compared the station location, the current station location, to some proposed locations, specifically East Lake Sam site. In addition to that, we looked at future planning, where I know that Andrea mentioned that the best location is sort of that front and Sunset spot where there certainly is no land available. So we default to the current location, and we feel confident that based off of the current call volume and the projected growth, at least what the city has on the docket, that this fire station would serve the city both today and in the future.
Just a follow-up. You know, for years, I've heard that we needed to move the fire station out of central Issaquah. We needed to move it north to serve the northern part of Issaquah. And so this came as sort of a surprise, that all of a sudden, we're back here on Sunset with this proposal. And I realize that land is hard to find, but again, this is a 100-year decision we're going to make, and we want to make sure that it's going to be what we want and what we need for the long term. And I'm, you know, I realize you've got data on current response times, but we have to be figuring out, is this going to, is this location going to last us? Is it going to be effective into the future?
City Administrator?
As Andrea's mentioned, this is a project that has been in discussion for a few years before I've been here, and I've been here almost five. And so what we did once the pandemic settled was go back to Eastside Fire and Rescue and start again with the discussions about the fire station and the assumptions that were made. The discussions that were pre-2019 about moving the fire station further north, we came to discover was under sort of a different set of parameters, where that station would not only serve, continue to serve Issaquah, but would also serve other parts north within the Eastside Fire and Rescue area. And so as we look to move the station, keep the station at this location, we will continue to very well serve Issaquah. I think there continues to be challenges in Semamish, and they are also facing questions about additional resources that they need. So under those pre-2019 discussions, I think the, an additional Issaquah station was looked at as helping Semamish. And so now, as we're moving it further south, keeping it here, we feel, as I think Chief Lane has said, very comfortable that Issaquah is well taken care of. It then, I think, provides additional discussions for the city of Semamish as to what they'll be doing with their fire stations and the need for perhaps an additional fire station. One part of this discussion, looking at the reconstitution of a fire station here, making it larger, will hopefully keep us from having to build an additional fire station in Issaquah at some other location in the future. So as we've kind of sharpened the pencil, when we came to the conclusion that finding another piece of property was becoming nearly impossible, this is what we learned in talking with Eastside Fire and Rescue. And Chief Lane, please correct me if you feel I've misstated anything about the discussions, sort of the macro discussions we've had over the last couple of years, as we've kind of made that assessment of what Issaquah's needs are versus perhaps needs further to the north.
No, those are accurate statements.
Okay, anything else on that? Great. Maybe we stay on fire for a second?
Councilmember Ray?
We never want to be on fire. It's really a bad place to be. So I was kind of intrigued with the idea that we don't have enough space within Fire Station 71 for large equipment, because we have our largest piece of equipment, as I understand it, the tiller is kind of based there. Is there a vision that there's something, some apparatus is still larger that we would need to house? Because that's a big rig. Your thoughts?
I can think of this one. Yeah, so your statement is correct. Our tiller ladder truck is our largest piece of equipment that is currently housed at Station 71. It's also important to note that there was a retrofit to allow that particular unit to fit in the center apparatus bay with only inches of clearance. Our angle of departure, so the crew has to, if you see them during busy travel hours during the day, they have to back the unit inside the station because we're not able to drive through. And then it would, it prevents us from future specs of an apparatus where we had to, where there may very well be the need to expand that unit. Right now, it's a single-axle tractor-drawn aerial ladder truck. And given the size of the building, we could not look at a tandem axle, which is probably the more popular tractor-drawn aerial resource. So yes, currently, our largest apparatus is there today, but there are some significant barriers, and it certainly prevents us from potentially specking the apparatus that's most appropriate in the future for the city.
Great, thanks. One follow-up on fire, but this is more a facilities thing. Did we look at what it would take to remodel 71 as opposed to move and raise?
Yes is the short answer, and we still need more space. So we can provide that fit diagram that I mentioned earlier, so you can compare that. But really, the concern is, we would need to consume some of the current parking space, which would then, that's also serving the police station. And we may need also more space in addition to that parking area to accommodate the apparatus that we're hoping to house the new fire station.
Councilmember Hall?
A quick follow-up to that. And my understanding, too, is even if we did remodel that station, we would still have to tear it all the way down. Is that right?
Yes. Due to the type of construction, it's very difficult to just do a simple renovation. Chief Lane talked about the expansion that we did to try to fit the ladder apparatus that's there, and so it would be very difficult to work with what we have. That building's also aging. It also, like many of the other city buildings, is not in great condition. We do have the need for dormitory space for our responders as well, so we would need to make sure that the facility meets current standards. And it would take, it's not practical or feasible to just do a renovation. We would likely have to level it and construct new.
Anyone else on fire? Fantastic. Councilmember Martz?
How old is Station 71?
I'm looking over to Jeannie to see if she recalls. It's not off the top of her head. We'll have to come back to you with that information. Unless Chief Lane knows, and I'm guessing he probably doesn't either. Okay.
Okay, we'll look for that information while Councilmember Hall is quickly trying to search for it. I can see, I can read you, yeah. Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Okay, thank you. So I had a little angst about the picture that was in the presentation, and I think we've got to be very careful about the images that we are putting out even at this stage of the game, because I'm hopeful that if we built a brand-new fire station here, that it would be designed to fit into the Old Town look. And so I would hope that we would not put out any more of those kinds of photos. It was a little bit like, whoa, we're going to have this huge structure here, multi-story, and I don't think we want an industrial-type look to that. So I just want to mention that. And then, so I think that if we're thinking about doing this, we have to be really responsive to how is the business community on Front Street feeling about it? How is the Creative Arts District feeling about it? We've got a lot going on in this old historic part of Issaquah. And so any major new building like that, I think, has got to fit into the character of this downtown area.
Do you have a question on that, or?
Do you agree with me?
Deputy Council President DeMichele, any building that's constructed in the Old Town area would need to comply with our design standards. So that was just meant as a visual to say that it will have to be multi-stories in order to fit onto this property, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done, many more conversations with the community about what they would like to see in a fire station. And as I said before, certainly, the design standards would apply.
Councilmember Joe?
I had a court question if we're ready to move on to that. I'll let...
Councilmember Hall?
One more fire question. So what would happen if all of a sudden, the state parks are interested again? At that point, would we want to, and we're going down the path of building Station 71, would we reevaluate at that point? Or are we sold that this is, is like, this could serve Issaquah, but also we're members of an organization that supports an entire service area? And if we can create efficiencies for multiple jurisdictions without decreasing level of service here in Issaquah, is that something? So I guess this is a roundabout way of saying, would we reevaluate at that point if they were open, or would we be happy where we are?
I believe the key thing that you said is that we want to make sure that we wouldn't result in a decrease in overall times for Issaquah. I think as we look at the system, system-wide, including Semamish, a station in the north tends to make a lot of sense. But if we look at really just Issaquah specific response times, overall, the northern location starts to make less sense. But one of the reasons why we were looking at it was also because we wanted to be able to find a site where the land could be free. And we've been working with state parks on perhaps a land exchange between city-owned land and state park land for that site. And so as we're still looking to build the fire station on land that is free, that's one of the reasons why we also thought that this location that we're standing in would be a good site. State parks, it's not a matter of necessarily their interest. There's a lot of process with the state parks. One part of that process, for example, the state parks has no control over, and that includes National Park Service approval. Due to how that property was acquired, they need to take this to the federal level and get approval there, and there's no estimate for how long that's going to take at this point. So it's not even really entirely in the hands of the state park system to make this decision either.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
So one second, do you have another fire station? Okay, Councilmember Martz, I'll come back to you eventually.
Station 71 was built in 1969. It's a wood-framed structure. My house was built in 1974. It's a wood-framed structure. I'm pretty sure it can be renovated. So I would need to understand more why this is an automatic teardown. 1969 is not ancient, and I would imagine the folks in 1969 thought this was a 100-year decision when they were building that fire station. So I, you know, I need to understand more about why we have to, it's automatic we have to tear down that station. Thank you.
Great, and we can return with that information, more information from the architect. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to say we can move on to City Hall, Court, other areas of questions, starting with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Council President. Question I had about the court was, has there been a conversation with the district court to have our council meetings at the court chambers? Or has there been a conversation with the school district to use their facility for our council meetings? Just as I travel through the greater counties, they're using those facilities interchangeably sometimes in a number of the different cities. So I was just curious as to what has been done there.
Should I answer? Yes, I've been shopping. So there's a few options for council chambers. A lot of it depends on where we end up with City Hall. So, you know, I've been collecting several options. Several of them include partnering with agencies to find space for council chambers. We also have Tibbetts Manor, so that is another option. We could renovate that space, put in a dais and make that more of a public meeting space for council. So yes, there are several options that are on our list that we're looking at.
Yeah, my only thought was that the school district would probably be very gracious in allowing us to hold our council meetings there. And if we're renting out the court space anyway, it wouldn't be too much of an add-on in terms of cost to do council meetings there. So I'm glad you're exploring all those options. Thank you.
Looking around at other quests, oh man, all of y'all. Okay, I'll just keep going around. Deputy Counsel President DeMichele.
So earlier, we had quite a discussion about how important it was to have the court next to the police station. And so, you know, I think I'd really like to hear from Chief Shuan about that. But, and in the document or the packet that you gave us, it said distance can be mitigated. But I'd like to hear what kind of mitigations we're thinking about, and how did we come to the conclusion that it would be okay to not have the municipal court next to the police station? So I don't know if Chief Shuan wants to answer that, or if you'd like to answer it.
Yeah, Chief Shuan joined us tonight just anticipating those questions, because we definitely did talk about, there is efficiencies in locating court and PD together, and we have for so long. But there are also so many other benefits to locating at King County District Court. And just from a customer's perspective, and we also have Kristi Shorn on as well, our court administrator, who can talk to this too, but we have a lot of customers who are confused on which court they're going to. And so if we co-locate, that is enhancing customer service. That was another benefit as well. But I'll turn it to Chief Shuan to start with.
Thank you, Autumn, and thanks, councilmembers. The biggest thing I know, we talked about, the court close to jail and police department was a big deal and helpful. But a lot of it was the services and the ability that the court had. Currently, there is no holding cell, which that does have what's provided at the next location. At the prospective location, I'd say, in the other court, it's got space for jurors. It's a lot more safer for everybody because of the security as well. We do have transport. A lot of what video court has done lately is, you know, changed some of that process of court needing to be so much closer to the police department because it's very limited these days, how many remands they actually have when there's in person. And that has changed that dramatically since COVID as well. So, and right now, currently even being across the street, we've still had to literally drive to get someone or someone picked up, whereas we have to do the same across the street.
Chief Shuan, you're breaking up a little bit, so I can help translate if you didn't quite catch that. And so several benefits, one is having holding cells over at King County District Court. And so there's not immediate need to pick someone up. So they can be in the holding cell until PD arrives for transport. And also, right now, currently, they still have to bring someone over in a vehicle. So they can't, they don't just walk them over across the street. They have to be in a vehicle. And so they're already doing that load and unload process. It's just a matter of driving over to the district court. And with virtual court now, especially during COVID, that has been very much perfected in its operations. And so there's a lot less transport that's happening.
Okay, Councilmember Ray.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions about the alignment to goals chart, because I appreciate the insights on why steward of public dollars and customer service were not viewed as positively for option B. And this is what I think I heard, I'm paraphrasing. But because there weren't any really viable options there, it wasn't going to be cost-effective and it wasn't going to provide good customer service. So the reality of it is, there really is no option B. I mean, I think this is kind of trying to give us a false sense of comparison, and I don't think it's real. Because I think customer service could be just as good in the core, and I think that it would probably be better uses of city dollars if we were in the core. So I think those are, I find this objectionable. So, because you're telling me you're making a comparison and it's not real. So I'm seeing nods, okay.
And the comparison's gotten a lot harder as we've done our shopping and looked around, and there just, there aren't viable options. As we know, we're very limited in property for anything from parks to facilities to a fire station. So in doing that work, we did not find very viable options.
Okay, a couple of other questions. How many people are we looking for leased phase four? And maybe it's, it can be expressed in terms of full week equivalents. So recognizing we have people working remotely, but I mean, how many, how big is this?
Yeah, I can get you those numbers. And so I can report back on those. But generally, what we're looking at, and again, it's pretty fluid right now, just because we're looking at what options are available as far as space versus before when we were doing space planning and say, this is how much we would need and how much we would build. But right now, what the goals are, are replacing the top floor of City Hall, as well as the community planning and development inspectors are currently operating out of Tibbetts. So moving them, as well as the permit center that's over in the Eagle Room right now. So those are the main City Hall functions, as well as, we talked about earlier, moving council chambers. So I can get you, I can get you the total FTEs of what that is.
That'd be awesome. And then, do we have a, I mean, we laid out the public safety plan, the $47 million? What's the, and the lease plan of the $5 to $8 million? What's the, what's the long-term plan for City Hall look like? I mean, is there, is there a long-term plan for City Hall?
I think there's a lot of work to still be done on what the long-term plan is. We would have available property next door to the police station in the future for, say, phase two. So that's one option. Again, I think the next steps will be figuring out a financing plan for that. So the option you're seeing tonight is really a way for us to start this process and package something that really gets us started on a path towards a full Old Town campus.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Right, and in that five to eight years, we do, say we do find something that we could purchase and renovate, then that could land, or we do identify a new revenue source for building and realizing this vision for a municipal. Is that what you mean, like during that we'll?
Yes, yes. And really, you know, as I've been talking with coworkers, this just feels like a chessboard. And it just feels like we need to move a few pieces just to get started on this project, because it is so massive and we have so many facility needs. And so that's why we're coming back to you with this phased approach of starting some of this with a priority around public safety.
And, and, Council President, members of the council, you know, we've had to come to face-to-face with a real difficult reality, and that is, we do not have money for general government. And if we go to the residents of Issaquah and ask for money, we're not going to get it, at least where we currently sit. And so that's really hard for us. It's really hard for any community. We are going to be among the first that are basically saying, you know, there are other municipal functions that are a higher priority. And making sure we have a stable and effective police department and a stable and effective fire service trumps the ability for us to have nice offices for people like me, Autumn, and Andrea to sit and talk and look at computer screens. Wish that wasn't the case, I really, really do. And so we want to make it clear that there is no, you know, other plans stuck in a drawer somewhere that's going to be whipped out with this wonderful, beautiful new City Hall. There just isn't, because there is no money. And there is no, in our estimation, voter appetite to provide money for that. But as Autumn has mentioned, we will have that site, we, as proposed, the existing fire station site for some point later in the future. But, you know, to put general government in leased space, we've looked around to see what other examples there are. In the region, there aren't very many, quite honestly, because it's just not something you do. But we are in such a critical stage with the police department, with the facilities that they have, you know, the request from Eastside Fire and Rescue to move forward with different facilities for them. You know, we're at this point, we really don't have a choice. And as Autumn has said, we don't feel comfortable spinning around anymore, that we really need to move forward. But with that is the unfortunate conclusion that general government is at the bottom of the list, and we'll have to deal with it at some later point.
Thank you. Sorry, that was kind of a follow-up question. My real question, real final question is this. And maybe it's for the deputy city administrator. I'm just curious how, let's say we do move forward with a bond, we want to put something on the ballot, how might this impact our future consideration of a parks district? Kind of the ongoing conversations that we have out of the old capital finance community, of course.
Yes, thank you for that question. So we have been talking to council about potential for a parks district. That was always meant to be in a little bit of a longer term timeframe. That's what the Capital Finance Community Task Force had recommended in subsequent conversations with council about that as well. And so in terms of, it really has to deal with voter aptitude and what the voters would support. And so we would need to address that then. But a ballot measure now does not necessarily prevent us from going back to the voters at a future date.
I'm going to jump on, because my question is very similar on that. If we're looking at a 30-year bond to pay for Fire Station 71, and don't really have a plan right now for a new City Hall, is there concern that we wouldn't be able to go back to voters within a 30-year period to borrow for a City Hall?
No, there's no concern. So cities typically, Issaquah included, we can take on different types of debt within that timeframe. So it's not just that this is our one bond for 30 years and we're not doing any other types of financing. We would be able to take on additional debt as long as we identify how we're going to pay for it.
Toward that idea, could we get a history of when our property taxes increased because of voter-approved items, so that we can get a sense of how we have regularly done that?
Yes, and we can look into the future as well. So we can come back with that information.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember, Deputy Counsel President DeMichele, you had a?
Well, one quick question, and then going back to that discussion. What are we thinking about in terms of where human services would land in this overall planning that we're doing? And then the other is really, I guess, do we have a Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C? Or if Plan A is that, Plan A would be, we're going to, for an interim period, lease a place for administrative offices and so forth. But the long-range plan would be to find a place to build a City Hall. Plan B would be, what? You know, do we have alternative future lines that we're looking at? Because we could lease a place and then not be able to pass a bond, and maybe we're stuck in leased offices for 20 years instead of seven or eight. You see what I'm saying? Is what is the, I guess, what are the paths forward that we're trying to lay out here?
Autumn, did you want to try to take a stab at that?
I'll try, and then Autumn can. These are all very difficult questions. Building a new City Hall in any sort of reasonable timeframe is not in the picture. We will not be able to raise the dollars to do that. Might there be an opportunity to purchase other space or a portion of a building at some later point? Perhaps. And if that comes along, we would, you know, be as aggressive as we can. As I've mentioned, it's not a normal thing for cities to lease. We're here forever. We should own the space that we're in. So there's various options, I think, given the real estate environment in Issaquah where we may be able to buy. And so we will continue to look at that. But again, the main priority here is the police department. We have to get general government out of the building in order for the building to be renovated and the police department to have sufficient space. The peril that we face not having a sufficient space for our police department is very significant. It is a difficult, difficult marketplace, and probably will be for some time, for police officers. People want to know that they're coming and have proper facilities, because our neighbor communities have them. And you combine that with $40,000 signing bonuses and everyone having a car, a city car to take home, everyone having a city car to take home, the costs associated with this are very, very high. So if we do not have a place that people feel, police officers, other police staff feel is safe and appropriate, that's going to have a real detrimental impact. So that's priority one right now. And finding whatever reasonable economical space we can for general government in order to move forward with that.
And human services, what's the thinking there?
Yes, so for human services, it really depends on where we find the leased space and how much we have. And so I've been in contact with human services, and it's really just a wait and see as far as the location we find. So if it's not something that's suitable, if we find another spot and it's not suitable for human services needs, we have other facilities here in Old Town. So it's not a ton of office space that's needed. So they're definitely on our list as far as one that we would figure out, kind of similar to council chambers, once we kind of know what is available for leased space. But they're definitely on our list.
And Parks Administration.
Yeah.
Councilmember Marts.
So if the proximate thing that is forcing us to do something now is the police station or the facilities available to our police department, I would like to see the numbers. I'd like to see how our police facility compares to Kirkland and Redmond and Bellevue and Smamish, in terms of staff and square footage, understanding how we compare. If that's the trigger that's forcing us to do something that is potentially financially extremely disadvantageous, I need to understand those numbers better. Thank you.
I'm going to step in here. Since, as you pointed out, our general government financing is very limited and all of that, would it make sense, or could we include public safety operations costs along with public safety capital in a bond? Could we utilize that to expand our police staffing to a certain FTE to resident ratio or something similar?
So bonds are used for capital projects. They cannot be used for really ongoing operational costs. Levy lid lifts are much more tailored for ongoing operational costs to support those, but not great for paying off debt service, as we've discussed. So as we think about how we want to move forward, just know that really one tool is appropriate to one type of expense, and another tool is more appropriate towards another type of expense.
Forward that idea, one of the questions I asked over email is, it does look like two of our neighboring cities in Bellevue and Mercer Island did levy lid lifts to build fire stations in the last 15 years. So is there an explanation for that, or an understanding why they were able to do something that our staff is proposing doesn't fit?
So I'm not familiar with the particular financing plan for the Bellevue and Mercer Island stations. We'd have to look at what those costs were, how other, maybe the levy lid lift was only a part of funding of those facilities. They could have had other cash on hand or government mitigation funds or other things. It's also possible that they could have used, you know, general funds to supplement and pay for the rest of the debt service. I'm also going to estimate that a fire station built in 2012 was considerably cheaper than one built to our modern standards. So we'd have to look into the specifics of Mercer Island and Bellevue. But, you know, what we're putting forward today, our proposal, is what the administration feels is really the best suited tool for our needs.
Consider that a request for information. Fantastic. Councilmember Marts.
So historically, we've carried quite a bit more council manic debt than we're currently carrying. carrying. Are we looking at, are we considering the council manic bond option?
That's not part of what the administration is proposing because even with a council manic bond, we need to be able to identify revenue in order to pay for those bonds. And so, with a debt service estimated at about $3 million annually, if we were to do a council manic bond without raising taxes or revenues in other ways, then that would require a $3 million-plus cuts to our existing budget in order to pay for that debt service. We've heard from council at the February council retreat that we should be considering a new property tax instead of trying to cover these, the new, the debt service with existing revenues.
Okay, but if the statement is, we don't have access to any money, I understand that we have, that we would incur debt. But I, if you were to look at the amount of council manic debt that we've carried historically, we are at an incredibly low level currently. We were able to carry council manic debt. When I started on council, we had a much higher council manic debt than we do currently. So, not obvious to me that there aren't some options here that involve council.
Yes, we can take on more council manic debt. The difficulty is how we would then pay for that debt on an annual basis. And so, we'd be required to make cuts to the budget elsewhere.
We've done it in the past.
Sure.
I mean, just if the statement is, we don't have access to money, we do. It's just that it's got to be traded against other things. But the idea of paying lease payments on city property should be traded against the financial implications of usually council debt. Because neither is a great option, but it's not obvious to me that, you know, leasing facilities is a better option.
And we're looking for direction through these discussions because as we look at the operating budget for '25-'26, if the council is looking in that direction, that council manic debt is the way you'd like to go and we need to make reductions in operations, then now is the time. We would like that feedback because as we're working now on '25-'26, we need to start identifying what we'll reduce. And the increased costs, we already know, we'll be proposing to the council and public safety, justice is gonna be significant. So, it could be a very difficult operating budget for us '25-'26.
This is just all sunshine and roses and everything. Okay, I'm feeling like we're maybe lowering down on our questions. Are we ready to switch over to get public comment and then do feedback rounds? Okay. Fantastic. Fisher, is anybody, including Connie, online?
No, no one's online with us anymore. Connie did send a chat message before dropping off saying her input was the need to understand why the placement of the fire station has been able to be moved.
Okay.
No one is with us virtually, other than city staff.
Well, I think council had that same question many times over, so we have certainly talked about that. Okay. Um, Ken, yep, so we've got three questions of direction needed. You want to talk those over or should I just read the slide?
If you'd like me to read them, I can.
Go for it.
Great. Three questions. The first, should the administration focus further research on a phased approach of the Old Town Municipal Campus, as we discussed? Does the council agree with the administration proposal to use current resources for leasing office and court space? And finally, should the administration proceed with planning for a ballot measure for a public safety facilities bond vote and start creating a community engagement plan for your review?
I don't know if our feedback is limited to those three questions. I think I heard a lot more than that. So, rather than going through one at a time, I'm just gonna kind of open it up because this is a big old pile of what-ifs. And we've already pointed out in several questions, well, maybe this versus that isn't the way that we're thinking about it. So, who wants to be brave and go first? Okay. You've got a question? Go ahead.
I have a question about these direction-needed questions. So, the second question has to do with the current resources for leasing office and court space. And my question has to do with, that it seems to me like that question about needing the resources for leasing office and court space comes into play if we are planning on renovating the current city hall building to make it all for police use and then this building, where we are right now, for the fire station. So, is there, it seems like the second question is contingent on the third, the bond. Or is it such that you need to start planning for the movement of municipal courts now?
We believe our needs for a new municipal court space that meets modern standards are urgent. And so, regardless of where we put the fire station, we really feel like we need to provide for a new municipal court offices and facility in addition to the IPD renovations as well. We believe these are urgent needs of the city. And so, they're not dependent on where we put the fire station. Does that answer your question?
It, I suppose it does, but I think, say, say we said, okay, we agreed to lease space for office and court, but we don't want to proceed with the ballot measure, then I think, then I think we would continue to use this for the court. Isn't that correct?
And we're saying we believe we need a new court facility regardless of the fire station. That's in terms of how we're serving our customers in court, how we are providing for the safety of those that use our court facilities. All of these things we feel are inadequately addressed in our current court facility. And we really do feel like there's a strong and urgent need for us to move into a space that's better suited to house a modern court.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead with more questions, folks.
Oh, well, I am sorry, but that one kind of sparked something because it's really about prioritization in some way. The question really is, you talked about courts, courts is an urgent need. The administrator talked about police, police is an urgent need. So, how urgent, and I don't want to say how on fire is the fire department, but how urgent is the need for doing something with the fire department? I mean, do we have some latitude with that?
I'm wondering if Chief Lane can come back on and help answer that question. I know that we have been talking with Eastside Fire and Rescue for many years about the need for a new fire station facility. So, hopefully he can help address that question.
Yeah, I'm happy to. There are some significant challenges with the current station. They're outside of what we call healthy and healthy outstanders, where we work hard to provide a very safe work environment for our responders. So, the current Station 71 does not have a positive pressure living space where we can have an airlock between the apparatus bay and the crew quarters to keep carcinogens such as diesel exhaust separate from the crew quarters. There currently is not a fitness facility large enough and inside this fire station. So, some of their PT is done right alongside the apparatus and where it's parked. The bunker gear storage, we do not have adequate bunker gear storage where it's in a separate UV-protected closet space with proper ventilation. The building itself is, doesn't meet seismic standards as far as the dormitories or the dorms and the actual washroom facilities. There's definitely some upgrades that are needed there. Having worked at that station, that station has been converted time after time after time. We've converted it from an open office space. We've done our best, our due diligence to do what we can, but we, I think we've sort of reached critical mass with that specific facility. This has been, in no doubt, it's been an ongoing, longstanding conversation. But I really do think we're at this, a critical point where there are significant upgrades that are needed. The city was kind enough to make an investment a few years ago to do some creature comforts. But at this point, and we're almost beyond the service life of those as well. So, I don't have the overall final answer, but we are definitely in need of upgrading and a replacement of the current Fire Station 71.
Thanks, that was real helpful. Thanks, Ben.
Okay. So, again, I'm looking for anyone who is willing to be brave and go first on their feedback for this massive set of decisions that we are being asked for. Councilmember Joe, you win the gold star tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council president. Question number one, should the administration further focus research on a phased approach? I think that's the best way that we can go forward. I agree with Councilmember Ray that the comparison that we had there really kind of painted us in a corner a little bit and kind of left us with no real choice going forward. But it is the, but it is a responsible choice to go forward because our police need that extra space. And once you start moving one piece, as Autumn Monahan pointed out, it's a chessboard where the other ones need to follow, at least in a rational, thought-out, you know, kind of process. So, if you move forward with that Old Town plan, then I think that it does make sense that the police are gonna move over to the second floor of the city hall building and then we have to find space for the administration and court. Many of you may know that I was part of the council when we put this court together in 2006 and 2007 and had the vote to go ahead and break away from our partners in the district court system. At the time, we were only handling our cases, our Issaquah cases, and it was not a huge lift, but it was enough of a lift for us to kind of get our feet under us. Now, we have partners with Duval, R-Nation, Snoqualmie, other partners that bring their cases to us as well. It's a source of revenue for us and it's also a source of building better community between the partners on this, in this area. We have grown up and we have a little, we have grown out of this space. As many of you know, I was also, had the pleasure of being on the bench here as a pro temp judge. And there were times when the court was going just fine, but the prisoners, the people who were currently in court didn't need to be brought over and there were times when we would need to wait for them or because of the limited space and safety, we couldn't bring over all the people all the time. Some people had, they had to be broken up into groups. So, having a holding cell, from my point of view, as a person that's been on the bench, is a very important safety element that we didn't need as much when we first put this court together in 2006, 2007 along the way. So, I believe that it's important for us to go ahead and move over, move over to the district court for the court space. I've been in the holding cell as an attorney, helping my clients out. And it's a, it's a great space to have conferences when there's only one prisoner in there. All the other resources there for the court for us, I think we should capitalize on those resources until we can find a place and an office space for our court again. Obviously, we need to move the administration out so the police can expand. And so, question number two is a yes for me. The last question, I would like a little more research done on council manic bonds so that we at least have all of the options in front of us so that we can determine which type of package we want to give to our citizens for consideration and find out the pluses and minuses of each one of those along the way. But I think that we should go forward with at least researching the bond or the levy lift or the other financing that could make this entire plan possible. We're moving in small steps. It's gonna be a big process. But this gives us, this plan, as I've agreed to tonight, I think gives us a good start and meets our current needs for the police and the court right away, along the way. And then we can get our police department to a place where we're competitive with our partners and competitors in the bigger cities as we're trying to attract good police officers to Issaquah. So, how's that, folks? Is that all right? All right.
You covered all the bases and you started out, so you still get a gold star. Councilmember Martz?
Thanks. There, I hate to say this, there's not a lot of this that makes a lot of sense to me. The problem to me is the urgency that requires us to consider leasing property. And I don't feel, so extraordinary, Carl Sagan said, extraordinary claims require extraordinary evidence. I don't believe it's been proven that we urgently need a new court facility. I don't believe it's been proven that we urgently need to expand our police facility versus more officers paid better. We haven't proven that we urgently need a new fire station. I'd like to know how our fellow municipalities have done this. On the east side, Kurt Redmond built a unbelievable campus not too long ago, and I realize we're not Redmond and the economy is different now. But all of this has an emergency feel to it that I don't believe has yet been shown to my satisfaction that we are in an emergency. It's a terrible financial situation to be leasing property as a municipality. And so, this urgency just, I don't feel it in my bones yet. I think, so I'm completely opposed to doing a first phase without knowing what the eventual city hall might possibly, potentially look like. I think it would be very bad for the residents of our city, for us. It feels to me like taking off in a plane that's partially finished and trusting that we'll finish the plane while it's in flight. So, if we were saying, here's our plan and it's challenging and it's gonna take a bunch of money, but here's what we get in the end, I think that I'd feel better. I could, I could face voters and say, I understand where we're headed. But I just, this thing where all of a sudden we're in emergency footing and have to make really disadvantageous financial decisions, I don't yet feel it. So, I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Council President Demichel?
Yeah, thanks. I must say that I agree very much with Councilmember Martz. We've been having this discussion for a while. We know what the need is, but I don't think, I don't feel like we've made the case. And I think if we're going to go out to the voters for a ballot measure, you have to make the case that you have an urgent need for police, for fire, and for a new municipal court. And I just don't feel like we have done that. And I think there are still so many questions out there and a lot of research that needs to be done. We've identified some of it tonight and perhaps we need to have a follow-up discussion to even go deeper. So, one of my concerns is that, as Councilmember Martz said, we're going to, we're gonna, I'll characterize this, we're doing a piecemeal, we're going to do a fire station here, you know, that locks us into, oh, we're not gonna have a city hall here then. Well, where is the city hall going to be? And as I was alluding earlier, what is our, what are our fallback plans in case we can't pass a safety bond even? Councilmember Hall brought up the parks, you know, things that we want to do with the parks. And I'm just feeling like I just don't have my arms around all of the decisions and all the possible outcomes that could be, that would logically follow, as Councilmember Joe said, as, that would logically follow from this decision leading to this decision leading to this decision. I just, I just am not feeling that we are prepared yet. So, the answer to bullet number three would be, for me, would be, we are not anywhere close to being ready to plan for a ballot measure or for public engagement because I don't think we have yet made the case that we take out to the public and say to them, here's one, two, three, four, five reasons why we need a new fire station. Here's, you know, here are all the reasons we need a new municipal court. This is why we're making these decisions and we hope that you will... This is why we're making these decisions, and we hope that you will support us in going forward. Right now, going out to the public and talking to people, I think there are just too many questions that we wouldn't be able to answer. Thanks.
So I've gotten a message that Chief Shuan has a comment. I really appreciate that, chief. I'm going to continue on with council, just to make sure that we hear from all of the council members. I assume we're proposing a lot of questions here, and there's going to be a lot of comments from staff. So I'm just gonna, letting you know, I'm going to wait on that for a moment. Councilmember Ray, then, Councilmember Hall, then Councilmember Ray? I appreciate that, but I'm gonna come to everybody. Yep.
All right, perfect. Thank you. I don't know, I feel the exact opposite of the last couple of things. I actually feel very good with where we're at here. Number one, thank you for all the tremendous amount of effort that has gone into this project in several ways over the last few years. That can't be understated, the amount that's gone into that. I think keeping the focus and priority on public safety facilities is the right one and a smart one, based on need. And I think these are all questions that we can do the data storytelling on. We know the firsthand accounts of the challenges around these things. We just need to be able to quantify that and come back to council, and it sounds like that's something we could definitely do. I do think for the first question, yes, continue with focusing further research, although I'm still very interested in us keeping an eye out for purchasing and renovating properties. I think completing this vision of a municipal campus in this area where we have so many different connected services is super compelling and lovely, but also costly, very costly. So I'm also, well, actually, if we'll have a piece of free land, maybe not as costly. But I'm very interested in what might come up in the coming years, too. So I would just prefer that we have someone continuing to look into that. Make me a very happy council member. I do think that leasing space is actually a smart way going forward, especially because it's so cost-effective compared to building new spaces or dealing with whatever disadvantages, consequences there might be of not moving out of the police station, of not building a fire station. So there's kind of thinking about it from both sides there. I think it makes sense to move forward with leasing space for the time being. I'm very interested in opportunities that you're currently pursuing in that, and I'm interested in getting a kind of a clearer picture of what that cost might be as we continue to tease that out. That said, though, it does make me a little uncomfortable going into something, knowing we'll have about enough revenue or enough funding for five to eight years, but after that, we're not sure. So I would like to kind of see through, at least from a general high-level place, where might we look if we still need funding for either leasing space, if we decide that that's what we want to continue to do? Or what are the different options for even purchasing a space? Especially if we're in the middle of a bond right now for fire and police, and an opportunity comes up to purchase something, at what point could we explore like another bond for another thing? And would that even be reasonable, given the property tax base right now, and how many bonds people are paying or about to pay here in the Issaquah area? And then the last question, yes, I mean, I think we do proceed with kind of community engagement. I'm assuming community engagement is some sort of task force, community task force. I think, for me, the need is clear to have this revenue source. It came up many years ago, even as the capital finance community task force was doing its work, the urgent need in this space, too. We stayed out of that space largely because the group wanted to explore where we hadn't had as much investment in these other spaces and where we needed more revenues. But to me, the need is clear, especially for public safety facilities, not just facilities. But the timing, again, same thing with, like I said earlier, the timing is a little concerning to me, thinking that there'll probably be a school bond on the ballot soon. Did the county just pass a, did a property tax just pass at the county level, too? So I'm just worried about just the effects of all of this stacking up and the community support there. But at the same time, I also don't see an alternative to a voter-approved bond. It seems like we have to be able to ensure we have a revenue source to actually pay for these. So, oh, two other things I wanted to add. Both are what Deputy Council President De Michelle said that I wanted to add on. First was lots of neighborhood engagement for a new fire station here is going to be critical. I liked your point on that. And then also having a plan about what to do if we start to go down this path and a bond were to fail, and we don't reach that 60% threshold, what might we do at that point? So those are my thoughts. I think in general, I'm quite happy with where we're at. I think there's still some work to go into this, but again, thank you for everything you've done.
Okay, I think we're going to Councilmember Ray, and then Councilmember Hunt, are you up? Okay.
In the queue. All right. A couple of things, I'm not going to go sequentially, but I do want to talk about phasing, and I think phasing makes sense. Matter of fact, I think phasing is the only way that we can do this. I'm sitting here thinking about a bunch of dominos that need to fall, and there's some small wins that we can get. So I think the court move, actually in some ways, if this is not going to be a barrier for law enforcement with being across town, you know, leasing space in the county facility makes a ton of sense. It's a court facility, and this is, you know, this is lovely, but this is not a court facility. So I think that that is the first domino that we should look to fall. I'm not opposed to leasing. It creates a necessary buffer. I mean, because, you know, it is the shuffling of the pieces, you know, it's one of those slidey puzzles, and we've got to move things around. So I'm not opposed to leasing, but I only in the, with the caveat that there's a longer-term plan in place, that we know where we're going and when we're going. And then we get into the question that Councilmember Hall and Deputy President De Michelle brought up, which is, what if we start going down the dominos and then we don't get the funding? And I think the thing is, we don't start moving unless we get the funding, and the funding is a necessary precondition to doing anything. And if we fail at funding, then we've got to take a big old step back. I think that the fire station is really, in some ways, represents one of the biggest challenges it has for at least seven years, as long as I've been around. So that one is going to be hard, any way we slice it. We have to have some contingency plans in that, you know, what do we do if? And then I think this was Councilmember Martz's point, that I'm kind of not super psyched about knocking over the dominos when I don't know where City Hall is supposed to end up. So I have to have, feel that we have some, if not concrete, here's what the long-term plan for City Hall is going to be, that there are some viable long-term options that we can pursue. And then disagreeing a little bit with, or maybe not even disagreeing, but not a big fan of councilmatic borrowing, I think particularly for something of this magnitude. If we're going to be spending the dollars, we've got to bring new revenue sources with the dollars. So that's my thinking. Oh, and last thing, I think we should do public engagement before we start talking about a bond. I think we should be understanding what the public really, you know, what's important to them, and then maybe circle back and talk about how do we start to plan for a bond or a ballot.
Councilmember Hunt?
So on the first one, I think there were a lot of options that were researched and considered, and this was the one that we were presented with. But we aren't really presented with the information on the other options. As was mentioned previously, there's an option B, but it really wasn't feasible financially. And so I think having more information about, these are the things we considered, these are why they aren't possible, having that so that we can also read through that logic and vet all of that, I think would be helpful. Because as we were asking questions, you were saying, well, we did look at that, and, you know, these are the reasons that it didn't make sense. So I think just kind of surfacing those as options that were considered, and these are the reasons why not, would be helpful. It seems to me, as other people have also said, that the first thing we need to really think about is the funding for the public safety facilities. And then if that, if we do have funding to do that work, then we have a need to move the government facilities. And then there's a bunch of moving pieces here. So one consideration could be that I think we could, I think you could make a chart with the same goals for the different facilities, like this is best for courts, this is best for the police facilities, this is best for the fire facilities, to do things this way. Because there's a lot of different reasons why you chose this option, but I think, you know, for example, as was mentioned, if we, if there wasn't a bond that passed, then we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't, we would still have the building as is. So then what would happen? And I think we would probably continue to use this building for court in that case. So I think just having the phased approach laid out with why this is the best approach, and then also the timing of moving court and the benefits to court specifically, the benefits to the fire service specifically, and the benefits to police specifically, would help tease out some of those different things, which are kind of all together into one option that seems like, after considering all the options, found that it was best, but it doesn't really lay out all the benefits and all the other possibilities. So one other thing, I think the leasing could make sense if it's really the most cost-effective. I think for the court to move to a court that is currently a court, that seems to make sense because there's not a lot of tenant improvements that we need to do. So I would similarly hope that we could move to a, if we're leasing a space, that we could lease a space that doesn't require a lot of tenant improvements, and that is already office, or is already something similar to the city council chambers, for use of the city council chambers, so that we don't have to spend a lot on tenant improvements and then ultimately not have a long-term investment that the community is going to be using for more than however many years we intend to use it. As my fellow council members have said, having that longer-term vision of how long we're going to be leasing, or likely to lease, and then where those facilities would move would also be very helpful. And yeah, I just think there's a lot of data that would be helpful in terms of, you know, we talked about service times, that service times would be comparable or improved for the fire station if it moved here. It's a very similar location, so can we just see how that would play out and then, you know, see what are the, what are the expected actual benefits of moving it here? If there's additional capacity, additional fire trucks, how does that improve service time? But just get some sense of the public benefits for all these different components, and then how they could be separated out, or if it makes sense to separate them.
Okay, I'm taking the end slot here. We can go back for seconds if there's anybody who comes through. My feeling on all of this is that I think it's been pretty well laid out that the police department needs the full City Hall. That was what that building was intended for. That is why we have looked for City Hall space over the last year. I don't know how often you guys have been over there to see that facility in use. It's packed, it's old, it needs a lot of work. And I think, having been in the municipal court here, I can say the same. So my thoughts are, it's clear that those two are priorities and needs that we need to address. And I think police department is the main reason we went on this journey in the first place. But based on what I've heard from other council members, it seems like we may need to do a facilities tour with staff involved as a way to show. I remember doing that for City Hall Northwest and jumping on the second floor and feeling it move. So any demonstrations like that, I think, could be very pointed for us. Not that I'm saying anybody should, yeah, okay, fantastic. Similarly, I think it might be useful to take council on a tour of the municipal court, or the district court, or other City Hall facilities, or something that gives us a sense of where we're at and where other options are, I think could be useful. Further feedback, I think the phased approach makes a whole heck of a lot of sense. I think the big point that I think Autumn made in the staff report of, hey, we only have limited staff time, and we can't take on five projects at once. And so I think for that reason, that really gave me a sense of, oh, yeah, that's right, this is the right approach, rather than rebuild everything all at once. Taking things on in segmented projects makes sense. That being said, I'm really disappointed that we would have no other choice really than leasing for City Hall and municipal court without having a plan for a permanent location. But I did really appreciate what City Administrator Bobkowitz said, that, hey, while we're leasing, a space may become available during that time throughout the city. You know, we did an intense search over the last year and couldn't find anything, but properties can become available. And so that is helpful for me in thinking about it, because I think, well, one option is to build a new campus in the Old Town area or another location where we already have property. Another option is to buy a property that could save us money. And so I think in that way, the leasing gives us flexibility of options to look at potential purchases. That being said, I'm not bought in on the idea of this as a proposed location for Fire Station 71. I think we still have heard from a lot of council members that we need some more data and information on that. We were given a story for several years that we needed something in the north. I think the story of, hey, but that is potentially a smamish issue makes sense, but still doesn't positively explain why this is the right location. So information on response times, information, as Deputy Council President De Michelle said, of, hey, this is a really busy location. Do we think that this location is going to serve us for 50 years? All of that would be helpful in understanding that. And then on financing, I do think that we're going to need a voter-approved bond. I'm ready to do public engagement at this point, but I do really want to understand what our contingency plans are, particularly if certain other area bonds that may be on the ballot in 2024 don't pass, what that does to our timeline and our ability to move forward with each one of these segments. Okay, we have heard from everybody. Anybody hear something from council members that they want to figure something for them? Deputy Council President?
Just another request for information. We got a very nice list of municipal bonds that have passed and failed, but it's my understanding that there's been a wave of bond failures around school districts. And so I'm wondering if we could gather that information. My sister lives in Spokane, and I believe Spokane lost their first bond measure in the last 40 years, most recently. So, and I think it's legal for us to get advice on the political environment that we're in, and I would suggest that possibly we do that now rather than later, and that would help us prepare and also perhaps help us with the timing of any community engagement that we wanted to do around a possible bond measure. I think that figuring out where public sentiment is right now about how much taxes they're willing to assume, and the general feeling towards government at this point would be, might be really helpful information for us. Thanks.
Thanks.
Anybody else? We have said a lot.
You have.
Administration.
I'd like to give the chief, Chief Shwan, an opportunity to share whatever she would wanted to share. But Chief Shwan, are you still there?
I did receive a note saying she was all good. It was just toward an earlier comment, so I think we're probably okay.
You know, thank you all for...
Sir, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Now we can.
I just wanted to say in touch base that I know it's been mentioned that, you know, we need more officers, and I'm never going to dispute that. At the same time, we are bursting at the seams inside the facility that we're in, unfortunately. And so that is a definitive thing in space, that's a big piece for us in the future.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, thank you all for your comments. This is a lot, and as we said at the outset, we need to get moving. And so appreciate all of the feedback that you've given us tonight. It seems like there's two buckets of, of next steps. One is sort of a data bucket, talking in specific term, more specific terms about where we stand on fire, perhaps talking in more specific terms of where we stand with the court. We have a committee of the whole scheduled, City Clerk, for the 13th of May, which this was the planned topic, the continued discussion. So I guess my thought would be to use that meeting as a data meeting, have additional discussions with the EIC Fire and Rescue. They have all the information, and I'll just ask Chief Lane for confirmation. I, I don't believe, Chief Lane, we've heard anything tonight that you don't already have the ability to share. Was that your sense as well?
That's correct.
So we can, pending on schedules, plan to give a full briefing on the fire station locations, calls for service issues. I'm a little unclear as to how much more you'd like to hear from the court as far as data and issues are concerned there. Perhaps I think the second bucket's field trips, and so we'll get, we'll get to the field trip bucket in a second. But we'll plan to talk about data from fire, and then Autumn and Andrea, I think there are other pieces of information which we can share and walk through. And so that probably is a meeting in and of itself. Does that sound reasonable for May 13th?
Yeah. So we did already have another meeting set out, and you feel like you can get those...
Again, with the confirmation from Chief Lane, as we have talked about this over the last, you know, 12, 18, 24 months, all the information you've asked for, I think we've all seen various forms, so that's, we should be able to share that. So then it comes to field trips. Certainly, we would love to, to show you the current conditions of the facilities we've talked about, also perhaps show you current conditions of other municipal facilities in the area that we would, you know, of comparable communities. I think it's important that you do this all together versus doing it in bits and pieces. So would the council be willing for the administration to work with council leadership on what that might look like, you know, over one or two meetings, depending on how much ground we need to cover? We may also, I mean, the reality is, is the fire station is next door. You know, perhaps as we look at the agenda for the meeting on the 13th, if it makes sense to start there, and then come back in the council chambers, just in order to cross that off the list, figuring the other locations are not adjacent to the chambers and will require transport. So I think those are the two next steps. In, you know, in talking with Mayor Polly and communicating with her this evening, she feels still very strongly about moving forward with a community task force. And so I think we will talk about that as well on May 13th and share, and perhaps the mayor will join us and share more of her thinking, or I can as her agent to do that. But again, this is hard stuff. There's a lot of critical pieces here, and we appreciate the council's willingness to roll up his sleeves and be very forthright. Deputy Counsel President D. Michelle and I had a, a great conversation this afternoon when she rolled out her list, and I said, please bring it. I mean, we want to hear what these issues are, because if they're issues for you, they're going to be issues for members of the community, and better that we bat through them now than later. So we'll plan, Council President, then, to put together an agenda, working with council leadership for the May 13th. How, that will be mostly data, and if we can make a visit next door to the fire station, we'll do that. And then look at another date, probably two dates that would be more field trip, get in the van and go take a look at stuff. Does that make sense to you?
Makes sense for me. What I'd like to hear from council members, probably just over email or give me a call, is what your thoughts are on field trips, what you need to see, what you think would be valuable, timing, et cetera, things like that. So if you could get back to me, that would be great. Councilmember Martz?
Just a comment about the 13th. I will be in, finishing a trip to Bozeman, Montana, to watch my youngest graduate with his college degree, so unfortunately, I will not be here. But I will be a proud pop.
We will be thinking about you and your son at that point. Okay. I think we have provided a lot. I think the administration's given us some potential next steps. For more information, I'll look forward to hearing from council members. And with that, anything else? Staff over in the corner, far, far away? Okay. Well, yeah, I was just going to go back to the agenda items. Yeah, good of the order. Deputy Counsel President?
So, fellow council members, there is a list of commissions and board meetings coming up where we are hoping that we could get you to sign up and go out and thank our commissions and boards. So, Councilmember Hall, thank you so much for participating, and the rest of you, shame and guilt. So, and if you need me to refresh that email, just let me know, I'll send it to you, and we've got the signup sheet online. Thanks.
And that's what leadership is for sometimes, is just to bring a little bit of honest truth to everybody. But everybody participated so nicely tonight, so appreciate that. With that, we are adjourned at 8:28 PM. Thank you.